Okay, like to call the order this February meeting of the Mount Carmel area school board. Please rise for a pledge allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silent meditation. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We'll begin with the roll call.
Valiant.
President.
Brecker.
President.
Mr. Brett. Mr. Brett.
President. Hello.
President virtually, Mr. Gonzales.
Here.
James is present, Mrs. Latour here, Mr. Muldowney.
President by virtual.
Mr. Renault.
Here.
Mr. Zapp.
Here.
All present.
Announcements. Cheddar.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzales. Just a quick updates for everyone. Just a reminder that tomorrow is an Act 80 day early dismissal for all students pre K to 12. Reminder, this coming Monday is also a snow makeup day, February 21st, and our second, at this point, knock on wood, our final snow makeup day will be March 14th. One other update from the administration here at Mount Carmel area, some end of year dates have been determined by the administration and board, more information coming soon. But we're thrilled to announce that Sunday, June 5th, will be our graduation ceremonies again planned at the Silver Bowl Stadium. We're gonna have a little bit later in the evening. Start time of 7:30 PM. Friday, June 3rd will be our prom and we're excited to announce that we're gonna, our prom is coming back to our gymnasium. So we're excited and more information will be coming on. Themes, our junior classes are working hard to prepare for the prom as well. Thursday, June 2nd will be our senior parade. Wednesday, the 1st will be class night and baccalaureate scheduled for May 22nd. So again, more information coming soon. At this time, that's all I have, Mr. Gonzales.
Thank you, Mr. Cheddar. This time we have recognition of student merit award winners, elementary.
And I apologize if I say your name correctly, so you can correct me. It is with great pleasure that I nominate sixth grader Viara Ivadoff for the school board. Yeah, thank you, for the school board merit award. As her band instructor, I've had the privilege of knowing Viara for the past years. During this time, I have worked with her in various capacities, including privately, in ensembles, and on a personal level. Viara serves as a leader within our groups and does so by example. I have jokingly coined her as the little mama of the percussion section, as she is always willing to help out other members. She is a delight to work with and is always very well mannered and cooperative. Viara displays a high degree of integrity, responsibility, and ambition. She is a talented and dedicated young musician who always comes to class prepared. Viara also has a kind, friendly disposition and a refreshing sense of humor. Viara's classroom teachers agree that she is an outstanding role model. She is always cooperative and respectful. Her easygoing personality and positive attitude make her a pleasure to be around, and she is well liked by all. Academically, Viara excels because she is driven to do her best. She works hard and is an overall pleasure to have in class. In addition to playing in the elementary band, Viara plays the piano outside of school. She also enjoys reading, journaling, painting, and gardening. Viara is the daughter of Jifko, and I apologize, and Angelica Ivadoff. She resides in Coltman with her parents, brother Philip and sister Vivian. Congratulations, Viara. Keep up the good work. Sincerely, Mrs. Rosska. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Latour. Nevin, I think you have the next one.
Okay, so next up, we have Trenton Arbogast. Trenton was nominated by his teacher, Mrs. Schwartz, in November. But he wasn't feeling well to come in for our last meeting, so he's gonna get his award today. Mrs. Schwartz says it's with great pleasure, I nominate sixth grade student Trenton Arbogast for the merit award. Trenton has shown great personal growth in his time in our school. He's a very hardworking student. He comes to school with a positive attitude each day and is always willing to lend a helping hand to a peer. He shows his tornado pride by being kind, respectful, and honest with his teachers. And with all these fantastic qualities, he still remains very humble. Trenton always tries to lift the spirits of those around him through his humor. You can always count on him to have a good joke ready to tell at any time. Trenton displays many characteristics of a merit award winner and is a very, is very deserving of this honor. Outside of school, Trenton is an active Boy Scout member of Troop 174. He attends Salem United Methodist Church of Christ in Colt Township. Trenton's hobbies include walking, riding his bike, and swimming. He also enjoys playing video games and watching movies. Trenton is the son of Jeffrey and Tony Arbogast and resides in Mount Carmel with his parents, his brother Brayton and sister Elia. Elia. His grandparents are Jeffrey and Elizabeth Arbogast of Colt Township, and Bill Maher and Barb Wiskavich of Mount Carmel. Congratulations, Trenton. Keep up the good work. Sincerely, Mrs. Schwartz. Trenton, we're not gonna let you off just as easy. I'm gonna give you this, but we need to hear a joke. Do you have anything for us?
I don't know what a cat's favorite color.
What's a cat's favorite color?
Good job. High school, Donna?
For the high school. Um, Mount Carmel area Board of Education merit award winner for the month of January is 10th grader Maddox Reed. He was nominated for the merit award by his teacher, Mr. Cuddick. Mr. Cuddick said Maddox is a very conscientious student. He completes his work in an efficient manner and volunteers regularly. He has superb academic achievement. He is not only polite, but also kind and friendly to his fellow peers and teachers. Not a day goes by without Maddox telling me to have a good day after leaving class in the morning and asking how my day went when I see him in homeroom. His gentle disposition makes him an admirable student. Maddox is a member of the Mount Carmel area football and wrestling teams. In his free time, he enjoys spending time with his family and friends and being outdoors. Maddox is the son of Sean Reed of Mount Carmel. Maddox, on behalf of the Mount Carmel area Board of Education, I would like to present you with the January 2022 merit award.
But I would like to know in your free time, what else you though? I think you should share that.
You definitely should.
Monster pizza. Every time I go there.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Congratulations to each and every one of you. Congratulations to the parents. Because you guys wouldn't be here doing these things if it wouldn't be for the guidance you're getting. Please continue to do what you do. You are role models, whether you realize it or not. So continue doing it, and thank you once again for coming here tonight. You may stay or you may leave your excuse if you should want to, but it's up to you. But again, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job, guys. All right, let's move on. We need a, a motion is needed to approve the minutes of the January 20th, 2022 regular board meeting.
All favor.
Hi. Hi.
A PTA representative report. Is there anyone here tonight for that? No? Okay, we'll move on. Recognition of guests is our to speak to the listed agenda items. Please state your name and address.
David, I'm from.
You, you wanna do this now?
Whatever, I'm not sure what's up.
Specific question on the agenda that we'll discuss it.
Yeah, I know. I'm looking to try to point it out to. New business item number five.
Five, yes. It's on the back of first page. Yes, so if you wanna. You have a question regarding it?
Well, we're all rooming, the optional masking.
Susan, if you have to pick up a pizza, it'll be okay and safe.
Yeah.
That's all I'll say to you. You can.
You can wait till the end.
Maybe, you can wait if you want.
But well, I mean, if it's, you know, these are my time to mention a few things, I will, otherwise it's in my direction, I don't.
I don't, I don't wanna be smart, Sue, but it'll be in a direction of the students at our school districts, and we'll do what, what is best, but yeah, you know.
Just give us a few minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then if you don't want it, you can still speak at the end of the meeting.
How's that? It won't take long.
I think it's probably aligned in what, what you're thinking.
All right, administrative reports, Mr. Cheddar.
Just one additional announcement, Mr. Gonzales. I just wanted to take this time to highlight our staff. Our administration started a program called Because of You. If everyone would have time to check out under our district heading that you see on the website there. Again, our administration came up a way to highlight our awesome staff. So many of our teaching, classroom staff, administrators, maintenance, kitchen staff go above and beyond here at Mount Carmel area, and our administration team just wants to highlight some of these individuals. Each month, our, our own staff get to nominate staff that they feel go above and beyond in the classroom, and we highlight those staff members. We put their picture up on the internet and we give a little bit explanation how they go above and beyond. Our administration then treats our nominations with a special lunch in our own cafeteria. So again, just an opportunity for myself and our administrators to highlight our awesome staff here at Mount Carmel area that continually go above and beyond. And that is all I have at this time, Mr. Gonzales.
Thank you, Mr. Cheddar. Principals report, senior high school.
Um, yes, good evening, everyone. Just a few items that I would like to highlight. With the second marking period closing and the high school offices are gearing up for spring events. So our guidance counselors are beginning scheduling within the next few weeks. This week and next week, students have had the opportunity to tour the Northumberland County Career and Technical Center in order to gain an idea of the various course offerings that our technical school, school has. Counselors will also begin meeting with juniors to start off the scheduling for next year. Class advisors and our office staff are also working with our seniors to make sure they're fulfilling all of their graduation requirements such as job shadowing and senior projects. I'd also like to give a special thank you to Mrs. Diane Rumble, and a congratulations to the MCA students who participated and had their writing published in the February 8th edition of the news item for the It Can Wait Writing Contest. It was for students in grades nine through 12. It's a nationwide contest, and we actually had a second place finisher in Jagger Delaney and a third place finisher in Laura Lee Geis. So congratulations to all of them. We had 22 additional participants for Mount Carmel. And again, thank you to Mrs. Diane Rumble who spearheaded that, that competition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Renault. Mr. Dara.
Good evening, everyone. Second marking period report cards were posted on January 21st. Third marking period progress reports were posted on February 11th, and the next round of progress reports for the third marking period were posted on March 4th. I would just like to take the opportunity to thank our maintenance crew for all their hard work throughout the year, especially during the winter months with all the snow removal. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dara. Elementary.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Mrs. Stepanowski is gonna give the report this evening. Hi, good evening. Progress reports will be sent home and posted on the student information system on Friday, February 25th. Plans are underway for Read Across America activities in the elementary school. There is a Dr. Seuss themed dress down week plan for the week of February 28th through March 4th. Thank you to Mrs. Katie Francis for planning these activities. We are also planning on celebrating Kindness Week, March 14th through March 18th, and we want to thank Mrs. Carleen Zalocki and Mrs. Carrie Malasevic for planning these activities. And we also just wanna make everyone aware that our Odyssey of the Mind teams have started preparing for their competition, and we wanna thank the participants, coaches, and parents. That's all.
Thank you. Special education.
Hi, good evening. One thing I wanted to mention was, I wanna thank Mrs. Giles. She's our transition coordinator. So coming up in the spring here, we have our students that we're starting to prepare our 11th graders to start thinking about what they wanna do after high school. So all of our 11th graders are offered transition clinics. So we'll be having those in the next couple of months. We'll be, so parents be on the lookout to be invited to those transition clinics where we'll have representatives from OVR and Career Link and possibly some colleges, depending on, you know, what your students' interests are in, and we, we discuss how to make that transition from high school to college or a career or independent living as smooth as possible. Also this year is the Northumberland County Transition Conference, and that is at Susquehanna University, and we invite students in grades 11 and 12 that are in our special education program to attend that as well. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Maintenance?
Yes, good evening. The renovation project is finally starting to wind down. The contractors were here this week finishing up some punch list items. They're also here doing a follow-up testing with the biopolar ionization systems. If you recall, that's the, those are the systems that thoroughly clean the air throughout our schools to make them much healthier. At the beginning of the project, they, they started by taking air samples and periodically they return to monitor and verify that the units are, are doing what they're designed to do. So all's well on that end. Last month, we started utilizing best cleaners to assist our staff cleaning at the elementary schools, and that's gone pretty well so far. And even with this service, we are still in need of some custodial position. So if you're interested or know of anyone, please have them contract the district office. Thank you, and that's all I have this evening.
Thank you again, Dave. Thank you for all your hard work. Athletic directors?
Yeah, good evening. I just wanted to mention that we are rapidly coming to a conclusion with our winter sports season. With that in mind, our swimmers, our wrestlers, our basketball players, both male and female, will be moving into postseason competition on a district level with the hope of advancing to state competitions. Specifically, our wrestlers will be in the sectional wrestling tournament at Shumoken area this Saturday. There's two sessions in the afternoon and the evening. Also, our girls' basketball team has qualified for a home game. They will be playing at our gym next Tuesday night with a team to be determined. That will be found out at, after Saturday, after all the games are played, we'll know who we're playing. Also, our boys have qualified for districts. We do not know right now where they're gonna end up being seated and who they will be playing, but they have qualified. So as soon as we have that information, we'll pass it on. And of course, our swimmers will be participating in the District Four Swimming Championships in Williamsport in the next two weeks. And a final note, just as in the fall, all tickets for district competitions will be done online through the District Four website and the Hometown Ticketing App. You can go online there and pick up all your tickets, and again, the athletic department is available anytime to help and assist with any of our parents, fans, or interested individuals that are interested in going through that process and might have, need some help. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Skavitch. At this time, I need a motion to approve athletic items one through seven as listed. Motion, Mr. Zach, second by Mrs. Latour.
Mr. Balliant?
Yes.
Mr. Brecker?
Yes.
Mr. Brett?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzales?
Yes.
Mrs. Jamesville Chess, Mrs. Latour?
Yes.
Mr. Muldowney?
Yes.
Renault?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
A motion is needed to approve financial items one through four.
Motion.
Motion.
Okay. Mr. Brecker?
Yes.
Mr. Brett?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzales?
Yes.
Mrs. Jamesville Chess, Mrs. Latour?
Yeah.
Mr. Muldowney?
Yes.
Mr. Renault?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yeah.
Mr. Balliant?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Committee reports under Mount Carmel area Education Foundation. Mr. Cheddar, is there anything you wanna add?
Mr. Gonzales, there is no foundation meeting this month, but there is next month. Just a reminder to our community with spring season starting up. Again, the major fundraiser, we are running through the signage down at Tornado Alley, so make sure to get in those signs and make sure we'll, we'll get those posted for spring sports season, as well as our next football brick order will be done on May 1st. And that is all I have concerning the foundation, Mr. Gonzales.
Thank you, Mr. Cheddar. A motion is needed to approve new business items one through 10 as listed.
Motion.
Mr. Brett?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzales?
Yes.
Mrs. Jamesville Chess, Mrs. Latour?
Yes.
Mr. Muldowney?
Yes.
Mr. Renault?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yeah.
Mr. Balliant?
Yes.
Mr. Brecker?
Yes.
A motion is needed to approve personnel items one through six excluding item number two. May I have a motion?
Second. Oh, Mr. Gonzales?
Yes.
Mrs. Jamesville Chess, Mrs. Latour?
Yes.
Mr. Muldowney?
Yes.
Mr. Renault?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes.
Mr. Balliant?
Yes.
Mr. Brecker?
Yes.
Mr. Brett?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
I need a motion to hire Cassidy Leeser. Okay, Mr. Renault makes the motion. We have a second?
Second Muldowney.
Mr. Balliant?
Yes.
Mr. Brecker?
No.
Mr. Brett?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzales?
Yes.
Mrs. Jamesville Chess, Mrs. Latour?
Yeah.
Mr. Muldowney?
Yes.
Mr. Renault?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes.
Uh, this time, before we go to public comments and questions, I would like to go back to Mr. Cheddar.
All right, everyone. So what our board voted on tonight was the revision to the health and safety plan. At this time, Mount Carmel area is going to move to optional but recommended masking for all students and staff starting tomorrow, February 18th. Just a reminder, ultimate goal was always to keep our students and staff safe, as well as to do everything possible to ensure in-person learning. With the optional masking, we will no longer require quarantine of close contacts of a positive case within our school buildings. But a reminder here, household close contacts of positive household members will still quarantine as per DOH and CDC guidelines. And again, that depends on your vaccination status. Obviously, positive students and staff will follow the PA Department of Health guidelines for quarantine before returning to school, and obviously, our school nurses will play a major role with you in communication with you to help you through that process. Still at this time, even though we are moving away from mandatory masking during school hours, the federal mandate is still in effect, which means we still need to require masking on our school bus. Again, that's due to the federal mandate. Just some things I wanna mention here as far as, again, if our positive cases would reach to what we would deem a concerning level, which the state and the Department of Health looks at a 5% of your population, roughly giving the differences in our high school and elementary between roughly between 37 and 43 positive cases in a 14-day rolling period, we may have to look into going back to requiring masking. Again, I'm hoping, we're praying, knock on wood, wherever you're at, that we're not gonna have to go anywhere near anything like these types of numbers. But again, we have those safeguards. We have that planning in place where heaven forbid, if we did get hit those numbers, that we would look to possibly bring back that mask mandatory. And again, we will continue to update our COVID-19 real-time tracker, which is found on our main website for the remainder of the school year. We're gonna continue daily screenings. Again, what we're asking, as, as we move away from mandatory masking, still our parents and guardians have to play a huge role in this. Again, COVID is not over, obviously. We need our parents and guardians to continue those daily screenings of your child before you sending them to school every day. Kids need to stay home if they're sick or if they're exhibiting any COVID-19 symptoms. If a household member is awaiting test results, it's important to stay home until they receive those results, and again, your vaccination status plays a role in that. And again, thank you to our learning community for your understanding and support during the pandemic. One of the things I do wanna mention, again, I, our, our teachers, our administration, our school board helped lead this district through this pandemic. I know our community had a lot of different opinions about how best to react during the pandemic, but I just wanna highlight our students here for, for one second. I think all of us in the last couple of months can, we couldn't turn on a TV or read in the newspaper how contentious school board meetings were, how people were arguing back and forth. Our kids at Mount Carmel area never did that. From the very beginning, they may not have liked it, and again, a lot of people had different opinions on what to do, what was best. But our kids, from the first day, knew that this was the best way for us to continue in-person learning. Never, they rarely ever complained. They did what, again, what they felt was best and what they were following, again, the lead that we set forth. And again, I know a lot of them had differing opinions, but I, I just wanted to, I had to take an opportunity to talk about how our students reacted was truly amazing in the last two years. And again, we're not through the woods yet. We're, we're hoping and praying that the worst is over, and we, I'm hoping that we never have to go back to some of the things that we had to do the last couple of years. But again, I would just, as I close, to finally thank again our administration, our school board, our teachers, and again, our students for doing a great job. So that is all I have at this time, Mr. Gonzales.
Thank you, Mr. Cheddar, and thank you for your excellent guidance through this whole thing. And I echo what you said about the faculty and staff and everyone else, and may I add that this board did not take this decision lightly. It was discussed at great length considering many options as to what we should or should not do. We don't know for right or wrong, but we're doing this at this time because we feel it's the right thing to do. Remember the caveat of the 5%. So hopefully, we'll stay under that number, and we've been considerably under for the last length of time, and if we continue to stay there, we will be fine. With that being said, I will turn it over to public comments and questions.
The thing that I got is the clause, depending on vaccination status. We've seen that doesn't matter. You can be vaccinated and still get COVID. So that depending on vaccination status, just doesn't make sense to me anymore. That's all I have.
No, I appreciate what you said, Dennis. I mean, I'm, I'm fully vaccinated and boosted, and I got it. So, but the thing is, I didn't die. You know, and I think that's what, what they're about at this particular point.
I can understand it. You just throw that in there just to have it in there. It doesn't make sense for contact tracing or for any reason whatsoever. I mean, that's just a, a personal health issue thing where it may help you prevent dying. It may, it may not. I mean, you can get it and be not even sensitive symptoms and not be vaccinated on either end. So it's, we've seen that, we've seen it all end of the spectrum in the last two years.
You're absolutely right, and that's the thing. This is a new thing.
Right.
And obviously, with science and anything else you learn as you go through it, you make more mistakes than you do make, do positive things, and, and everybody's trying their best. That's all I can say.
There's no, there's no question.
Yeah.
I just, just throw that in there.
No, that's fine. Thank you for your concern. Thank you. Sue?
Um, I'm very happy that that decision was made this month because I feel like it's time for the kids to have a way to be in order to get a better education because it does have a lot of consequences. I looked up part of the, and that requires you can try to support the decision based on some of the research I've done. But also along the lines that he mentioned about vaccination, I see that coming down the road, and I will be that if there becomes a mandate on vaccination because there's plenty. I see that coming down the road and I will be that if there becomes a mandate on vaccination because there's plenty of evidence out here. Not need it.
So if it does, it'll be somebody else making that mandate.
Right, I understand, but it's, it's not a good decision. I mean, there's so many, many more risk to children getting vaccinated than COVID ever poses for them.
Sue, I'm, I'm sure tho, those feelings were made, made known at time of smallpox and polio and MMR and whatever. And no one knew at the time, and I'm sure there was pushback at that point. And I think we just have to go along and try to do our best. Everybody does. And try to make this thing the best for our kids. And that's what we're trying to do. But thank you for your concern. No, of course. I mean, we, and we'll, and we'll, you'll stay here and I'll stay here and it'll be fine. But we're going to do what's best right now, we think. And this is what we think is best. Thank you for coming. Have we have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Zach?
Pizza, all favor?
All right. All right, thank you. Next meeting will be March 17th. Thank you all.